Do we have any notice that councilperson David may be absent this evening?
I do not. No, I did not have any knowledge of that.
Me neither.
All right. So what we'll go ahead and do then is we will go ahead and begin and just work our way into the conversation and hopefully that will give him enough time to jump on. If if I get a moment, I will ping him as well. So.
Oh, I'll do that for you, Mayor.
All right. So I can talk while you do that. Perfect.
Yes, sir.
All right. So it's good evening, everyone. It's six oh one P M. We'll call to order our virtual workshop for the town of Windermere, August twenty second, twenty twenty three. And if you all would do your best here as we're virtual to join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Amen.
I know that's not the easiest thing to do as we're virtual. I think at this time we'll go ahead and if you have public comment on this evening's agenda, we're going to talk about a couple items. We're going to talk about town hall enhancements as well as town events. This would be a great time to go ahead and open with public comment. Please keep that to three minutes. And if you'll raise your virtual hand, I will make sure we call on you.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. David is joining right now.
Thank you. So we have a full core of this evening.
Yes, sir.
For the record. All right. I'm seeing no public comment at this juncture this evening.
That would be correct.
All right. So we'll go ahead and move then to new business. A new business item A is town events. Do we? See, now I'm going to call you Robert, Tanya.
It's okay.
Tony, did you guys prepare anything for this? Or this is actually my item. I can I can discuss it as well.
I'm I'm happy to to go over it. I have the items and the information from the staff report if you would like me to, or if you prefer.
Why don't you do that? And then I will fill in as we complete that.
Absolutely. So as many on the call know, and many in the community know, as we were going through the pavilion discussion, it became apparent that some through some public input at town council workshops and public information meetings that folks were a little concerned about some of our events. And the things that got brought up were parking and noise and non Windermere residents attending these events. So in order to kind of assist the surrounding residents, town staff has met and are looking for ways to try to maximize or minimize, I'm sorry, the impacts to households. Some of the things that we're looking at is the possibility of reducing size, frequency and scale of the food truck events, ensuring that the entertainment is strictly adhering to the noise ordinance for all events in town, working with Windermere PD on the possibility of adding additional off duty staff for those evenings, potentially eliminating food trucks for the months of June, July and August. Additional months could be considered. Any additional events over a thousand attendees would need to submit a special event permit and have a public outreach work session before going to town council for approval. And then Public Works would purchase signage to identify areas where no parking would be allowed for all events. And then staff would continue to look for additional areas where parking could be accommodated for these events. So that's some of the things that we've been considering and that we're looking at. And that's why town councils here this evening to to look at some of those items, to hear any input from the residents who might have some input on events and what could possibly be done. And then also, we have a list here, and I will move down so you can see it of the current events that are taking place at Town Hall Square. So that's what I have for a report. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything additional you would like to add?
So I I will mostly second the items that you spoke of. I think this was a situation where when we were discussing the pavilion as well as other items that came up in the past months, I think it was becoming clear that we were hearing some concern about the types, the amounts, the size, the scope, the scale of some of our events. And one of the things that I did was ask that this item be put on a workshop agenda so we could discuss freely a little bit about what we want our events to be and look like and what we want our processes to be. And this is not to to say we don't want all these events. It's not to say we don't want more events. It is to say what is the level of impact and assess each event for the level of impact to the community and the target audience and whom it benefits, et cetera, to make sure that we're being smart with the events that we support and select. And I just thought that we could have a deeper conversation on that because it would be very helpful. And it would also give us some some benchmarks and some consistency. So when people ask, why do we have this event or that event? We, you know, we kind of all are speaking from one voice. So that is why I asked this to be put on the workshop. So at this juncture, I think what we'd like to do is get some input from council. If they see value in this, we could we could begin to devise kind of a an ROI on each event as well as the impact of the event and the benefit of the event. And then, you know, just kind of talk about, you know, maybe maybe each event gets an impact score from one to five, and we say we're going to have ten five or one five and three fours and, you know, that sort of thing. So we kind of know. So there's a little ebb and flow. I don't know if it's scientific or not, but I am interested. I certainly heard a lot of discussion on this. I heard a lot of discussion even from just town hall rentals to those individuals that are surrounding the town hall area. And as we begin to talk about, it's kind of segues nicely into our conversation tonight. Because as we talk about that, we want to make sure that we're able to do anything that we can do to buffer that noise from the neighbors and make sure that we have any noise or sound going as short a distance as possible. So with that, I see Mandy David has raised her hand. Mandy?
Thank you, Mayor. I I do have a couple of questions. And I know we had we had mentioned this, but I had not seen until I looked at the packet about events that are a thousand attendees or more. I think it's a good idea. My only my only drawback with that is for Parks and Recs, their events are to fund for improvements of the park. And I know that their events are highly attended, but it also draws in the money that they're able to use as a committee to make improvements on the parks. And so I just have a fear that that's going to limit them unless the town is interested in in giving more funding for improvements of the parks. So that that's just one thing I wanted to say for for a Parks and Recs plug. That was my only concern that I saw right off the bat. So I'm not sure if anybody else has anything.
So I think that, you know, there are opportunities to look at this in a way that and again, nothing, nothing is decided here. This is a it's an open conversation to say, hey, our concern is for committees that generate their funds from events. We want to make sure that we preserve that. So there is a way to do that. I do think, though, that we, you know, we can still have conversations about especially an event that has a thousand people or more that we want to make sure that we know exactly what those events are and that we're having them at the right time and that we're preparing for them properly. You know, one of the things we talked about with the example of Pet Fest was super well attended event, but parking was a true issue. I received more complaints for parking from that event than any event that I have received to date. So you know, that is something that I asked chief and town staff to work on because we've got to have a better parking plan. We can't just say it'll work out. We need to make sure that we're planning for this. So we have everything kind of all of our ducks in a row. There are other events that are pretty large as well that that again, we just need to make sure that we're planning for them, that we have the proper staff in place that we're you know, that we're taking it seriously to make sure that we as we grow in success on these events, that we have the right staff and and kind of perimeters and effect. But I totally understand about the the financial piece. Some of these events are moneymakers. Some of them are not. Some of them are community events. Some of them are targeted towards town residents. Some of them are targeted for the general community. Some are charity type events. You know, there's a lot of different things, but I just, you know, it it doesn't hurt to have the discussion and kind of work out some kind of criteria. So we know exactly where we're going with these. I just wanted to, I just want us to plan a little bit more so we can be a little bit more responsive to those individuals that we heard. Councilperson Stroop, welcome home.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for, once again, for staff for taking the lead on this and listening to the residents. Have we ever given any consideration to moving some of the, I know it's not in this city's authority to do this, but have we ever given any consideration moving those larger events to O U C Park? I mean, even the I mean, the parking is there, it's self contained, it's in a fenced area. It's it'll hold almost any event we have, especially the Pet Fest, or maybe even some of the larger, but we're getting any consideration to that at all, or is that a possibility?
I think we can look into that, Tom, absolutely. And I think I saw C T on the the line, and I know that she has worked to have some events there at the pines before and may know what the process is for that. I think we just kind of have to ask them.
Okay. I can tell you that it adds significant cost.
Well.
I should raise my hand.
C T.
Sorry. I'm trying to do right by this. Okay. Yes. Now, O U C also has a whole separate slew of rules and regulations. They're not booking a lot of outside events. We wanted music among the lakes there during COVID and well, at the end of COVID, and then they nixed it. Then the next year, we kept reaching out, when are you going to open? When are you going to open? Now, I haven't talked to him, to be honest, for about eight months, but prior to that, they were not opening up to any other events. It was mostly their employee events and other individuals that they know, I can, I, you know, other companies that they own or things like that. It wasn't like before where everybody could book O U C. You just had to book it early enough. And it's really not that cost prohibitive. It's it's about two K to rent the site, depending on the buildings and everything else. It's infrastructure, though. So, you know, it is a heavy lift if you're moving a whole event down there. It it just kind of changes the platform. But I'm not saying it's it's a it's something to start considering. I couldn't move wine and dine down there. The the facilities just aren't right for it. But, you know, music among the lakes, but we wanted to keep that you know, a down home resident event, which last year it was, and we are planning it this year. It's just more informal on the town hall grounds. So I would I would hate to have to move that down to the park. But again, we're we're going to follow your all's lead on this. I don't want residents upset.
And I think that, you know, one of the important things is, again, it's it's really not a matter of saying, you know, that we need to not do some events or move some events, but I think that we ought to be, you know, just frank and concise in terms of of kind of ranking these events, just, you know, by the time of day that they have, do they have live music? And, you know, attendance, so we know what we're kind of working with, so we can have the proper infrastructure and the proper personnel in place to kind of manage those events. And you're right, some some could potentially move. Some some are easily more easily moved than others. Some are kind of, you know, dependent upon the town hall space just kind of to work. I mean, you think about the something like the Holiday Hoopla is is that way. The Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast, the nine eleven ceremony, just some, you know, just some things to talk about. The, you know, there's definitely scale and scope of some of these that are, you know, some are big and and some are certainly not. So I saw Rick Mitchell up next. Rick?
Hey, everybody. I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Mandy David because she led the Halloween parade, right? Love you.
She's been awesome.
She was so awesome. I mean, I don't know if y'all were there. Jim, I know you were there.
Sure was.
So fantastic, just leading that crowd. So my understanding is P and R has three events, three major events every year, the five K, the Pet Fest and
Halloween.
Halloween. We can't call Halloween.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
But it's two to four hours. And so I get that some people don't like it, but guess what? You buy a house next to an airport, you bought a house next to an airport. So.
And we raise our own money for our committee. And it's all that most of our events are two to four hours. That's just the day.
Two to four hours, right?
Not to mention the, you know, months on end that we plan them. It just seems a bit much.
Right. I mean, look, you buy a house near town property near the the factors on the price of your house, right? I mean, you can't do that. You don't want to move this stuff to O U C property. You don't want to, C T said, I think, two thousand dollars. I mean, you kidding me?
And it's a tradition. These things we've been doing, I've been with you for twenty two years. We've done it every year. It's never been a problem unless I'm missing something.
Right.
I mean, they don't last more than two. I think the max would be Pet Fest, and that's four hours.
Halloween was probably four.
No, that's no, it's nine to eleven. It's two hours.
All right, anyways, so that's our opinion. We don't don't pay money for O U C. I mean, give me a break.
And don't change it all up. You guys know you love all these things. We've been doing it for years, right? All of us.
So you got people around that area who were complaining, but guess what? It's a factor in the price of your house.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, so remember, and I just want to kind of frame this a little bit. Listen, this is not to I don't want people thinking that we're talking about eliminating events. It's more about the conversation that we can do some things that might minimize that impact. That's the bigger factor, right? Obviously, you you know, if you have run among the lakes, you have to run among the lakes. We're also not looking to to impact the ability of committees to to generate funds and generate great events and 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 do all the good things that we do with tradition. And we do those things with tradition in mind. It's just it's just an open conversation to say, hey, we hear everybody. If there's some things that we can do to make these a little better, to tweak it and make the impact less, let's at least have that conversation. That's all that is. All right, I saw Donna Steele.
Fair enough, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Hey, Jim, thanks. I was just unmuting. So super quick, I would just suggest, everyone, keep in mind Windermere Recreation Center. It would be a lovely place for like a a music event or something like that. And we own it, so we wouldn't have to charge for it.
Yep, that that's a good creative idea. That's a there's a lot of opportunities potentially like that where we can we can look at some of that. All right. Thank you, Don. I appreciate it.
Sure.
And then we'll come back to Councilperson Stroop, Nora Brophy. Nora, I think you're muted.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay.
I thought I'd clicked it already. Anyway, Parks and Rec does, you know, two of the bigger events, Pet Fest and Run Among the Lakes. And I think we could do a lot better with parking with some more help from the town. You know, we, I mean, we have a, you know, there's a map up on the the Run Among the Lakes website on the town site right now that shows all the parking available for that event. I think we could probably add some special event parking. Maybe, you know, like there's a, I think, a big empty field by the old schoolhouse that could maybe be used for event parking. We used to be able to use that empty field next to U M C. And the owner would allow us to use it, but our insurance company doesn't want to give them a rider. You know, for a couple of days a year, but maybe the town could look into that a little bit more because I think I I know that's a big complaint that people have, and I I understand it because, I mean, I live downtown. I don't like people parking in front of my house. But I I, you know, with some more work with the town, maybe we can do better on the parking and and that should be a big help.
Absolutely. A a lot of these are things where, you know, like I said, if we just, if we move a little, you're going to make a a bigger impact than you would realize. So it's just thinking it through and and maybe just putting a little bit more effort into those things that that we got feedback on that, you know, maybe we didn't, you know, because if you, if someone's not parking in in your town swale in your front yard, you you might not think about it. All right. So when we hear these inputs, I want to make sure that everybody does feel heard and that we have the opportunity to to be creative and to and to discuss them. I know I know that everybody feels pride and ownership in their events and wants to make sure that 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 they go off as good as possible. And I think that's it's more in that light, for sure. Councilperson Stroop.
Yeah, thank you again. We're definitely going the right direction. Just to address some points that were made earlier. I'll have to say, when when I first moved here, and I do live in the downtown area, so I do speak a lot for people who live downtown because I hear it all. I mean, people knock on my door, they come by my garage. So when I speak, it's it's not necessarily everybody's opinion, but it is a lot of people's opinion. None of these things on here that I can remember, maybe Pancake Breakfast or a couple of things like that, were were happening downtown twenty five years ago. So we have to continue to address this as things happen. We can't you know, there was no airport here to speak of, you know, to quote Rick twenty five years ago. So now that there is quote unquote, an airport here, we have to address that. So we can't, we can't just say you know, well, you shouldn't have moved downtown or well, you shouldn't. So these are issues that are real concern. And once again, ninety five percent of downtown is still residential. And we do not have an H O A. There are, I think there's going to be eventually be eight, there's seven or eight HOAs in the town of Windermere now who do have a voice to speak for their neighborhood. And all we're saying as residents live downtown is that we want a voice to speak for our neighborhood, which is downtown. All of us, most of us do go to these events, and I don't want to nix any of them, to be honest with you. I like them all. All we're saying is that just some rules and regulations for them all so that we can we can enjoy them too, because none of these events were happening twenty five years ago. And now that they are happening, we're responding to that. So it's not as if, you know, the people downtown don't deserve to have their voice heard because they live downtown. It's just that these things, when they come up, like anything else, we didn't have any speed limit. And you know this too, Jim, or Mayor, we didn't have any speed limit signs in Windermere downtown for a while. So we eventually had to put those up for different reasons. And the same thing with the golf carts. There was no rule against golf carts, and now there's a state law against it. So we have to evolve with what goes on around us. So I don't think anybody, at least nobody I'm talking to, is saying to nix any of these events. We're saying spread the wealth a little and make it to where it's at least enjoyable for even the people who live downtown also. That's all we're trying to say here. I'm not coming at this with the approach that I'm trying to stop any of it. I just don't want to have to hear it. And this this is speaking for everybody in my neighborhood. We just don't have to hear it in our living rooms at ten o'clock at night. That's and that's the direction I think we're going. And I hope that's the direction we keep going.
Yeah, and I think we can look at these events. There's very few that go after ten o'clock at night. I mean, there, listen, there's a lot of little things that that we can get traction on that, I believe will be helpful and will not impact the quality or the quantity of the events. Just makes us makes us do a little better job on it. That's all in terms of some of those mitigating factors. Councilperson Williams and then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then Rick Mitchell again.
I wasn't quite done.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, sorry. So my, I guess my real point to that was is that whenever we think of these things, the people that that are, for instance, if we were going to do an event over at the rec center, I think the people that live in the manor should be consulted the most because they're going to be affected by it the most. So I think that when we decide on these events, we just need to take into consideration the people who are affected the most by it, whether it's the boat ramp, whether it's the Lake Street Park, you know, whether it's, you know, you know, Maine and twelfth. We need to take into consideration the people that live in those areas more than the people that don't. And I've always thought that way about, and that's kind of what Neighborhood Watch really is founded on, is that taking into consideration the people that are affected by it the most.
And and that's why I bring this to council, because it is council's responsibility as the elected officials for the town to, you know, to get that input and to make sure that that input is represented. And to make sure we, you know, that we're we're cognizant of of all that, not to be, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to take a vote on every event, you know, a a among among a neighborhood or an H O A, but certainly, you know, we want to have kind of a, all I'm saying is, isn't it best if we have, you know, some guidelines, some principles and some efforts to, you know, kind of know what we're doing before we do it, right? So we are, you know, cognizant of what's going to happen. We talk about what the challenges are going to be for each individual event. And then we address those, you know, because I think each one is a little different. And, you know, in the challenges that that they present.
I think that sounds perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Williams, then Rick Mitchell, and then C T Allen.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I think what staff has kind of bullet pointed in the in the agenda is spot on. I think looking at all the larger events, because need to be maybe not back in front of council, but need an extra set of eyes. A lot of these events have been running for ten years plus and haven't changed that much as what they asked for from Public Works, P D to help with the parking and help with trash and things like that, because that's that's what seems to be the biggest problem is our events that have grown. And those that put those events together, for the most part, are running them pretty much the same as they did from the start, other than, you know, a couple of extra trash cans, a couple more porta potties because it grows, but maybe just a quick review over what they need and suggestions of what they could change. I don't really want to go to, you know, requiring X amount of Public Works and X amount of P D for every event. You know, certain sizes. But maybe that's where we need to look at, because most of our problems are noise and parking. So with assistance of pointing out maybe where the parking is on the event days, especially the ones that are on Fifth Avenue that are hardly ever used, maybe a good, good way of going about it. I think all these events need to stay. I I love all these events. And when you really look at them, there's really not that many. Most of them are super small or only last part of the year. A couple of times, just like elders, you know, they meet four times and it's during the day. Nobody even knows we do it.
Exactly.
So, you know, that's my two cents on it.
Absolutely. And I think that you're talking mostly about the more major events that are larger in scale. And those are the ones that we just probably need to, you know, work our magic on to make sure that we're doing everything we can to minimize that impact. Listen, there's probably, there's probably ten simple things that that we could do that, you know, besides an extra set of eyes on them. You know, better enforcement, a parking plan. You know, maybe we, maybe we put a few barricades up to keep people from parking in certain places or, you know, discouraging that, you know, there's a lot that can be done that is not going to impact the quality of the event. So I think that's the key. I don't want everybody to feel like, you know, we're trying to chop out events. It's more about what do we do? You know, I I think I think the thing that hit me the most is when we were having these discussions, it it wasn't even about a large event. It was about town hall rentals. When one of the the residents from Forest came and said, listen, you know, it's not just the large events. This is every Friday and Saturday night sometimes where there's a DJ at a big, you know, party that maybe runs late at town hall. And it's not every Friday and Saturday, but it's a lot of Fridays and Saturdays, and it's louder, you know, it's bass and, you know, you know, these sound systems are better and better and better today. They're much more powerful. You know, you you didn't hear Bird Island twenty years ago. You sure hear it now. And so there's a lot of opportunities here that we can do some little tweaks that will be beneficial. So Rick, C T, and then Councilperson David.
Okay, I've I've not met Mr. Williams, but I really appreciate what he said. And also Tom Stroop, we have a lot of law enforcement connections. Come on, guys. This is three events. You're 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 like bending to the minority. When when you buy a house someplace and you you're going to buy near public property in the town hall, you're going to have this stuff. It's like three hours. It's like two to four hours each. It's not a big deal. I I hear everything you're saying, but I just, I don't get it. I mean, we've been here since, what, two thousand and two?
Yeah, I think that there there are, I mean, C T does so much great work with her fundraising. We do great work with Parks and Recreation. The the Windermere five K has been around as long as I've lived here for twenty two years, and so is the Halloween Festival. I've been heading up, sorry. But I, so when you say these are all new events, I mean, these are traditions. I got I got the old carved sign from like nineteen eighty something that somebody made for the Halloween festival. So do you, I know there's are some new ones. Our only new one is the Pet Fest as far as Parks and Rec go. But I think it's a great to have a conversation to, you know, do logistics and whatever, but, you know, I don't think, I I don't think it should be overblown. These are traditions. We've all grown up with this stuff. Our children have grown up with it. And I just hope you keep an open mind. A couple hours, three times a year, isn't really a big deal.
And and I want to thank Mayor and all the council people. I would not do what you do. So God bless you for what everything you do for our town.
Thank you, guys.
I know it's complicated, but, you know, I mean, come on, this is like minor shit.
All right, C T and then Councilperson David.
I'm mute. Okay, so I'm going to wear two hats here. One is a resident and one as Um, one is a resident and one as an event planner, uh, that I take very seriously amongst the residents. Um, I love all the down home stuff. We are a. Small town and I love it. And I love the Halloween. I love all the residents who actually step up to the plate. Parks and Recs, they're all volunteer, um, tree board, the rest of them. I'm, I'm garnering from all of this and Jim, you and I have had several conversations. I'm not sure that it's these events that have the major issues. Um, not the down home. We are, you know, small town USA. And of course, the Halloween parade should go on. The holiday hoopla should go on. Um, I would hate to see any of those restricted at all. And I'm not really sure they're the issue here. And I think drilling down, you have. Yes. Residents that are wrapped around town hall. Thinking about parking and sound. And I think those are two key issues. Is it really parking or is it sound? Um, and I think those are solvable solutions. Whereas, you know, we've talked about mitigating the grounds and doing a tree. You know, like a, a bamboo against the back and Forest Street and stuff. I, I, and I'm not, again, the smartest one in the room. That would be a. You know, Tanya and the Public Works and, you know, there's great things that we can do to mitigate some of that. I also know that we already have ordinances in town. So now I'm going to put my event hat on. And going back to Andy, and I appreciate your thoughts on all of that stuff. I'll be honest, every year we dissect what Wine and Dine has done. Um, how can we be better? What do we need different? Um. And we always, every year, we hire more police. Or we hire more public works. We get more trashcans. We, I, I think all of your event planners. And, and I, I'm going to forget some. So Nora with Pet Fest, I think we all do that. And we're cognizant of the fact that we have to be good stewards of our events. And so. I, I think that's already happening. I mean, at least I, I can only speak for, for Wine and Dine and for Music Among the Lakes is that. We already know that we need more trashcans. We need more police officers. We need more, you know, whatever. And every year we. We add those to make sure that we're being good event planners for the residents that are there. Um. I think if you really drill down to this issue. There are events run by residents who are volunteering their time, who are residents and live here full time and are giving back to the town. Food trucks. Is not a town resident driven event. I think that is. A situation that should be looked at a little bit more closely. I know you're cutting it back to maybe, you know, not doing it during the summer or whatever, but. I'm not sure that if we're looking at the whole event calendar, that is food trucks really resident driven? And if it isn't. Why are we doing it? Um, my understanding is we don't make a lot of money on it. And I could be wrong on that. That, that's hearsay. I've asked a few people. Um, and so that would be a, a council decision on that one. But I think you ought to look at the events from what's resident driven. And resident participated in. Now Wine and Dine, I'll be honest, it's fifty fifty and we do draw in. Fifty percent outside the borders, but we take their money and we do good work inside the town and outside. If, if that's something that's really an issue as far as the numbers, you know. Wine and Dine has an end game. You know, uh, we can talk about that at a later, you know, later conversation, but. You know, the numbers I don't think is really the problem. I think it's the event that look at what is really resident driven. I would hate to see Pet Fest be. Handcuffed in any way, because when I walked those grounds, people were loving it. And to me, that put. A hat on what we were about. We were family driven. And people were all there with their kids, their families. It was an amazing event. Um, I rave about that one. But I know you guys are in kind of a conundrum here, but I think we got to drill down on what is really the true issues. Parking on the one or two nights that we do have a lot of people and I'll, I'll, I'll be the first one to raise my hand, which I have Wine and Dine. But to be honest, I've never had. I, I've never received any complaints about it because we drive people in all of our texts and all of our Facebook posts. Go to the church. We actually talk to the church before our event. We make sure they know we're going to use their parking space. We guide all of our servers and all of our restaurants to. Unload and then you're taking your car down the way. And we do use that parking space in front of, uh. Uh, uh, the schoolhouse, you know, the one facing the, the street side. So. I, I guess when you, whoever was saying it, that, you know, as far as the event planners. We need to be. More cognizant of all that. I really think we are. And, um, I, I think we got to look at all the events that are not resident driven. That's my two cents.
Thank you, C T. Councilperson David.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just some, uh, real quick comments. First of all, I, I love all these events. I mean, this is. These events and, and the interaction in the town is why, uh, Marianne and I moved here. Um, so with that being said, I want to caution everyone, um, you know, let's not. Listen to a few individuals that are screaming loudly. Let's get the input of the, of everyone in the town. Because I think what we're hearing is a lot of, um, a lot of vocal, um. Vocal, uh, opposition to these events from folks that live down and around, um, the downtown. I love the idea of trying to locate other areas to hold some of these events. I think that's a great idea. You know, Windermere Rec. There's other areas in the, uh, other neighborhoods. So let's look at those as well. Do we need to tweak parking? Absolutely. But what I, what I caution is, you know, trying to, you know, parse out. What is the event that we are going to hold versus the events we're not going to hold, um. Based on some point system or some arbitrary judgment on it, um, because. There's some very vocal opposition. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any additional comment from council on this? All right. If there's nothing further, I think we'll go ahead and wrap this conversation up for now. And, um. We will, uh. Potentially come back and have a little more conversation once we, once we have a little bit more data and information, but I think we've got the general consensus from everybody at this juncture. All right, we'll move to our next item and that is. Item B, Town Hall enhancements. Tonya, are you presenting or is?
Yes, I'm, I'm starting out and then I will hand it over to John.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I'd like to say good evening to everyone and we're pleased to be able to present this to town council at your workshop this evening. We have presented this to the Historic Preservation Board. And also held two public input sessions for the residents relative to some proposed enhancements for town hall. This is a beloved town hall to the community and we wanted to be able to. Bring this to you tonight and discuss what we have. Found in these public input meetings and kind of the input we got back from all of that. So obviously maintaining the historical designation of town hall is important. So we've had discussions with the Department of Interior and Historic Preservation. Um, previous renovations use a lot, utilize state grant funding, which required extensive input and oversight from the Department of Interior, which is why previous experiences, um. Had a lot of oversight there. And so pursuant to the federal regulations and guidance provided by the National Park Service. The federal N H P listing does not impose any federal restrictions or limitations on demolition, alteration, or new construction for the town hall if there's not any federal funding attached to it. So without federal or state funding impacts to town hall are only regulated under the town local regulation in section three point oh one. Dot zero zero L D C. So, and I would like to give a shout out to Mr. Brad Cornelius, who is on the line with us this evening. He was instrumental in helping to kind of walk John and I through this process. He was able to consult with their, um, local expert at Wade Trim, who's actually certified in the federal. One point oh law regarding historic properties and their renovation. So he was able to kind of consult with him a little bit on this as well. So we. We were able to, to get a lot more information. The original appearance means that the appearance, except for the color, which is to the satisfaction of the town manager and closely resembles the appearance of either. So. A lot of our local town ordinance under historical provides a lot of leeway to the town manager. And then if alterations are not ordnance maintenance nor maintain the original appearance of the local listed historical place, then the alterations will. Will, um, need to be approved by the Historic Preservation Board through a certificate of appropriateness. So. Um, mostly what we're being told, especially from the State Department of Interior, and that's where the federal government sent me to, to ask for, um. Input is that if we're not using state or federal funds, they really will not have much involvement in, in what we do. And my question was relative to ensuring we did not lose the historical designation on the National Register of Historic Places. So. That, that's important. Secondly, the concept design for public input. So here's what we heard back from those public input meetings. It was that, um, they wanted us to move the handicap ramp to the south side of the building. So that's closer to the parking. Spaces handicap spots that are in the, in the library parking lot there. So that makes much more sense. Investigate opportunities for funding with Healthy West Orange for programmatic element modifications that would align with that original grant requirement. Look at modifying front entry steps to meet code requirements. Provide ADA accessibility to exterior restroom entrances and provide north and east elevations. And we will provide those through the construction documents. And also, um, the north and east elevations were not done prior to the public input meetings. Because there wasn't a need to spend money on that because the modifications there were so mine, would be so very minor. So we've been working with the architect on the north elevation concepts for Healthy West Orange and Town Council. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to John because I'd like him to take you through. What we were looking at in these proposed, proposed enhancements and modifications. And I would like to remind everyone to mute, um. So that we don't have any disturbances during the, the presentation. So John, if you would be so good.
I would, but I would also like to, um. Curtail that based on, uh, because I got Brad here sitting next to me to just reiterate, um, you know, what you just said. Because he and I have been working over the last hour in looking at the town code. And I think that ultimately, whatever we do, we've determined that we just need to get the certificate of appropriateness through the. H P B that says, hey, what we're doing is appropriate for the time, appropriate for what we're doing. And once we have that, that will actually help us in just having a letter. Uh, designation, uh, for our records to allow us to begin. To talk about what I'm going to get involved in, in the proposed enhancements and modifications. So we do have Brad here tonight, so. Thankful for that. And they also have an historic certified architect on their staff. That's also going to walk alongside us to ensure whatever we do is consistent to maintain our historic preservation.
And, and only thing I'd add, this is on Brad, just to add to what John and Tony has already said is, you know, historic preservation is, is. Is implemented really at the local level. With the local regulation. And one of the things that's so great here about the town of Windermere. Your historic preservation program and your board, you are a certified local government under the state of Florida, which means the policies and procedure you have in place. Locally are appropriate to assure compliance with state and federal requirements for historic preservation. So that's, that's a good thing. Um, so as John and Tony have both said, I have confirmed and I'm, I'm actually working. With another client through this exact process, um, different kind of issue, but same process. Where it, it ultimately, the, the state and federal designation, unless you're getting money for that project or the. Or a project is impacting a, a listed resource, it doesn't restrict you. It's a local. A local issue. Um, so as John said, you do have a process though, certificate appropriateness. So what, what John and I have been talking about, it would go to the Historic Preservation Board. There would be a public notice for it. Um, it would be a hearing, basically like a public hearing. They would evaluate the changes based on the requirements in your code. And make the determination that it's. An appropriate alteration. Um, their determination would be that documentation John talked about that would show if a state or federal agency had an interest. Say we did the process that's locally required. Um, it, it does have an appeal process in your code, which means if somebody would want to appeal that, that certificate, it would then go to the town council and then you as town council. Would then have that ultimate determination on the certificate of appropriateness. So you have a, a good process in place for it. And my understanding is that's the process the town will follow with this project as it moves forward.
Right. And Brad, let me also add to that, that understanding that the Historic Preservation Board is a, is a group of volunteer residents. Um, that's the reason why we hired Mr. Tom Price, who actually has experience as a historical. Um, architect, and he has done historic properties in downtown Orlando. So we hired somebody who was familiar with the process and familiar with renovating and rehabbing historical properties. So, um, that's important to note as well.
Thank you, Tonya. So with all that being said, um, we think what we're doing and we will confirm what we're doing alongside Brad and alongside the H P B. We've already reviewed this, um, with the Historic Preservation Board. They, um, have basically supported everything we've gone through at this point. And I think it's important for the town staff and also town council to understand that this is a stepped process. It's a process that we have to go through to ensure that, one. We're meeting program, program requirements for the town. Well, at the same time, we were also meeting the historic requirements for. Um, moving forward. So we've spent a lot of time in review with H P B through the process. Um, with the, the, the quiet enjoyment of having a great architect, Tom, while at the same time, making sure that we had public input. And so I know a lot of you have already seen this, um, proposal and concept opportunity. Um, so I'll walk through it again. Um, we kind of broke down the proposed enhancements and modifications into three major categories. Safety, accessibility and functionality. Historic aesthetic improvements, as well as additional enhancements based on the need for the town. And so I'm not going to go through each line item because you'll see that in the following presentation. So Tony, if you can scroll to the next.
Sure.
This is actually, uh, one thing that we've never had. And so thank you, Tom, for providing us with an actual plan of the existing floor plan for the town hall. So now we have this documented. Through painstaking dimensions and Tom spending his. Uh, two or three weeks in a building just to be able to. Pitch what we currently have. So that gave us the baseline for our design and looking at how do we develop programs. So if you scroll to the next slide. Um, this is kind of, this is our revised floor plan for the concept. Um, I'm going to go through each one of the areas of. The proposed changes to the town hall. Most of them right now are earmarked in the darker lines versus the lighter lines. The lighter lines indicate where the existing facility is versus the, uh. Um, where we're proposing concept changes and enhancements to the town hall. So if you scroll to the next, I'm, I, what I want to do is walk you through each of them in a blown up scenario. Um, if you look at, um, A, this becomes a new multipurpose room. Disconnected from the town hall, um, but yet connected, uh, via restroom facility and via porch access. Um, very consistent with historic architecture relative to summer kitchens. And you'll see that a little bit more in the elevations. So what we wanted to do is hold true to allow us to have a new multipurpose room that could be used as a bride room, porch storage, office, first aid. Anything that could be used for whatever event that we might have going on at the town hall. Um, but yeah, you, when you look at the elevations that we'll see later, really, uh, is purposeful in its sense of place for the historic nature of. The building. If you look at B, what we were looking at is an expansion of the existing restrooms to provide. Both family restroom opportunities for events within the town hall, but also looking at expanding the restrooms beyond the limits of the current building. And then allowing that external access for us to use them for event space. Um, so as we have events that are going on and we have lost the restrooms at the community room, this now provides us with an opportunity. To lock specific doors to allow people not into town hall, but yet still have the quiet enjoyment of exterior access to a restroom. If you can go to the next slide, Tonya, that'd be. If you can go to the next slide, Tanya, that'd be great. The other thing that we looked at was ADA accessibility to the stage. We felt that was hugely important for events. If you notice in B, we have an ADA lift that will rise you to the stage. We're repositioning the stairs a little bit and just allowing that access from the front of the town hall space in through the back kitchen. We are revising the exit from the front entry to the side entry. The front entry did not meet code, didn't have the appropriate landings. So we're looking at modifying that to the north side of the venue. And then in addition, providing a pantry and then some wing walls for separation of space for egress and exit, but at the same time, providing separation of space to the kitchen. At the front entry landing, we're looking at revising the stairs to be code compliant. The stairs have different elevations for each stair nosing. In addition to that, providing rails on the side for protection so that people don't trip off the stairs. So that's more of a safety issue for us. Scrolling up a little bit, you can see what we're trying to do with stair exit stage left as you're on the stage to a new exit out the door, and then also being able to provide a secured equipment room so that the town can control the audio, the equipment, and the great expense that we've already invested in equipment that's there. We just want to protect that from tenants, those that lease the space, but also provide ourselves an opportunity to just control that space. If you scroll over a little bit to the other side, you'll see that we also added a long counter, a kind of a service counter to the kitchen with upper cabinets. As we have potluck dinners and events there, we thought it would be wise for us to look at an opportunity for us to, you know, have a serving counter. The flow through the kitchen works well from the west east side through the kitchen, through the through the counter to and exiting out to the other side, both by the exit to the porch as well as the exit out back into the meeting hall area. In addition to that, we're looking at providing additional upper cabinets between the windows for additional storage for our special events, but also for town staff and for town events such as pancake breakfast and the like. In addition to that, we are researching opportunities for walk-up windows as we have pancake breakfast. Be kind of nice to be able to push food out through a window. So we are looking at porch extension. In addition to that, we are so looking based on what Tanya said for based on public comment, is actually moving the handicap ramp from the north side of the building to the east side steps coming in. That would also allow us to provide ADA accessibility to the restroom facilities at the same time. So we would provide ADA accessibility closer to the ADA parking. Makes a lot of sense to us because right now most ADA accessibility to the porch and to these venues is park your car over on the south side of the building and then wander around to the ramp on the north side. So we wanted to make that, we wanted to effectuate that change to provide that for them. Tanya, if you could zoom out and scroll down to the next slide, that'd be great. So these are the elevations that we are looking at and working with Tom Price, our historic architect. One of the things that we determined is from the time period, and this is in review also with the historic preservation board. So I think that's important, that this is probably more of the roof style and the look that the town hall would have had back in the day, V crimped metal roofing, which is good for the town because we don't have to replace a roof every 15 years, 10 years after hurricanes. This gives us, you know, longevity in the roof. One of the things that we are trying to do in protection of the town hall is to give it another hundred years of life. And so we've been very diligent in working with Tom. You can see on the south elevation, the additional multipurpose storage room, which almost gives the appearance of a summer kitchen, which is extended off the building, but yet not connected to the historical part of the building, only through the porch. And then you can also see the extension of the restrooms coming out using the same window fenestration details that we have for the old style. And then working with new roof pitch lines that Tom and I are working on, one to give the town hall a longer life period without the flat roofs, which were not indicative of the time period, to more of these gabled roof structures that give us the longevity that we need. And I don't think we have any additional slides beyond that, do we, Tanya?
No, John, but we have a comment in the chat asking about the stove and the griddle and the refrigerator. So I think we need to cover that that'll be refurbished as part of this.
Yeah, so one of the things that we are working on, that's a great question. I don't know who asked it, but it's a great question. Right now, what we're trying to do is figure out program for the historical side of it in working with Tom on the architecture. Eventually, in conversations with Tom, we will be working with the kitchen consultant that will help us develop the right kitchen equipment layout, make sure we have the appropriate hoods, make sure we have the appropriate ansel systems, just bringing it up to code so that when people are, you know, cooking in the kitchen, we're up to speed on code. Last thing we ever want to do is burn the building down. And so we want to make sure that whatever we do from the kitchen equipment, we have the right consultants on board. And then that will also be worked with, you know, our special events folks and also be worked with the town and all of the program that we want to make sure that we're providing, one, the right kitchen equipment, but also safely installing it through gas lines, hoods, and everything else.
Yep, perfect. Thank you, John. And then the last thing I want to say to wrap it up before we turn it over to town council for their comments is a lot of people have asked about the special multipurpose room. So I did I did chat with Diane to find out kind of what the percentages were of residents choosing town hall for weddings versus people not living within the town. And she said about 90% of the people holding weddings at town hall were residents. Secondly, some residents who are parents and grandparents and would like their children to get married in the town that many of their generations have lived in sometimes don't use town hall because it didn't have a space for brides where they could get ready, they could stay air conditioned and all of that. So this item was not something that was proposed to bring more non-residents to town hall. It was actually to meet the needs of parents and grandparents in town who would love to have a facility that meets their needs for their children and their grandchildren to get married. So I just wanted to make that statement. I did check on that because, you know, that was a few comments that were that were made in some of the public input sessions. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we will turn it over to town council for their input. And then I know you'll want to take some input from the public as well.
Thank you, guys, for that presentation. I know that you've met with many, many residents in the public forum to make sure that we're able to get input on this. We will begin with councilperson David.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just want to commend Tanya and John and Brad for for this effort. You know, when it was presented to the historic preservation board, you know, we were looking for for options to take care of the the situation and town hall. And I think they they really brought it together with this, bringing Tom on board as a historical architect and really getting the essence of, you know, what Windermere and Old Florida, you know, stand for going forward. I, well, I did have a question for Brad Cornelius. I think I think what I heard was Brad, as the authority having jurisdiction for Windermere, we are, we don't have to go back to the state historic preservation office or SHPO to to get approval for this. Is that a true statement?
That is correct, sir. And I do know Tanya has already contacted the state historic preservation officer, and they have also confirmed that. So that is correct. So you would be the final decision.
Awesome. So great work to John, Tanya, Brad. I appreciate all the all the work on this. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, councilperson David. Councilperson Rose.
Thank you. Good presentation, and I appreciate everybody's work at at making sure that we could do this from a historic standpoint. My only question is, are we going to look at putting the porch wrapping around on the north elevation?
Yes.
Yes.
Molly, that's one thing that actually, I know Tom's on the call, but I want to, he's excited about looking at that opportunity because that does potentially bring us some funding. It also potentially brings us some opportunity to to look at alternatives. And that will be a separate presentation for you guys based on the potential for the Healthy West Orange grant. But right now, what we wanted to concentrate for you guys on was ensuring that we would maintain the historic preservation of this building, while at the same time providing the enhancements. You know, as we grow and, you know, times change, you know, what we wanted to do is present to you tonight is how our town hall is growing and how our town hall is morphing into the 21st century and now into the 22nd century, well, eventually, just to keep it up. And so I think that will be a separate conversation as we look at alternatives for that. I know Jim's been a, Jim O'Brien, our mayor, has been a big proponent of trying to figure out what that means to for that money. And then we are providing, because a lot of the program that we were already doing in the town hall already aligns with the Healthy West Orange grant, with the exception of us trying to figure out how we may provide a band stage or how we may provide an alternative for that. And so we're working with Tom Price on that now. Again, staying in character to the building, obviously review that with internal staff as well as Brad to make sure that whatever we do is appropriate and then bringing that forward to you all as council members.
Thank you.
John, you you did a good job there. I don't, I can't add very much to that. I think the the important thing is, is that we we break this up so we know what we're talking about if we do this independently and we know what we're talking about if we're able to utilize those funds from Healthy West Orange to meet the basic parameters of the grant and get a huge head start on the funds necessary to do a project of this scale and magnitude. This this project, I I haven't seen an estimate of numbers yet, but these type of projects are expensive. And it's important for everyone, I think, to make sure we put into context too, you know, the the changes that are taking place are designed to protect the building and designed to make sure that it's here 100 years from now. If we continue on the current track that we're on, it it won't be. You know, we know we've got a lot of issues to deal with. We've had things, you know, flat roofs that that leak and things like that, and a foundation that is is troubled is a nice way to say it. So we also have accessibility items and things that we need to address, not to change the character, but to make sure that we're meeting all the local ordinances and laws that we need to be meeting as a municipality. So there's a lot going on here, a lot of hard work by a lot of folks. And I appreciate all of that. And certainly, there's there's going to be some opportunities to to do some potential enhancements like like a better kitchen, like a like better bathrooms. You know, some of these things we have to address now because we don't have any bathrooms downtown. So we need to look at that as well. Donna, I won't forget about you, councilperson Mandy David.
Thank you, Mayor. Tanya and staff, John, Brad, this is amazing. Thank you for staying with the character of the town. It's beautiful. And thank you for adding the ADA part as well, because I know that one ramp is just not lasting. So I appreciate all of that and all your hard work, and it's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, councilperson David. Appreciate it. Any additional council input? Donna Steele, would you like to make public comment? Donna, you're muted if you want to make comment.
Okay. Hey, Jim.
Hey.
So I've just been listening to everything, and I just have one more thing to add, which I'm sure you hate, but one of my biggest concerns is that it's all been independently. I personally feel like not public. If you're on a Zoom meeting and you have to get the meeting on the app, and then you have to go to your computer to find the app. I don't, I, as being a person on the historic preservation board, feel as though I don't think I've ever actually seen a a public meeting. And I think a public meeting means a public meeting. I might be old school. And I will listen to anyone to say anything. But when people in our town have to find a Zoom meeting and click into it, and I, hey, Jim, I love you, but as you can see, there have not been very many people. We've had two public meetings for historic preservation board, and not many people have tuned in, not even the historic preservation board. Now, I was so looking forward to tonight, and I get it, but I I feel like when we used to have the meetings in the town hall that we're talking about, it would be good for people to meet and walk around and look and talk about it, right? And I think I brought it up at the first one, where where we we have come from Windermere, England. And this is how we got our designation. This is how we got our logo. This is how we're their sister city. And I just fear that there aren't many people living here anymore that if we don't share the history with them, they won't understand it. And I think if people have to tune in from their app, maybe they still don't know. And I feel like this is what keeps happening in town. Then you, God love you, and all the town council, you present everything. And it's, I I I call them the same people that show up every day. It's the Norris', it's the C.T. Allen's', you know? I'm out. I kind of taken a backseat, but then, you know, I get extremely passionate if we start talking about history of Windermere. So I am not sure who votes on this building. I'm not sure who totally, totally tells us it's going to be historic no matter what we do, what we add, right? I would love for you, Jim O'Brien, to go over to Windermere, England and check it out and talk about it. Because I just think I'm so passionate. I, so I'm not sure I could vote to approve if you are going to come to the historic preservation board. All I'm saying is, from what I understand, I'm not sure I understand enough about the town hall to vote. And I don't know how you could ask. That's up to all the other members. But I think that the council counts on the volunteer committees to read it and look at it and research it, and then you say, yes, we approve. But I'm not sure any of us, I think we're all kind of graphically artists and things like that. So.
Hey, Donna, maybe I can help here with what you're saying, because I get what you're saying. One of the things that I think in in, you know, Brad and I both realize that when we bring the final ultimate plan to you guys to the historic preservation board, we will have, you know, our due diligence done. We'll have concept plans that we bring forward to you. And I think that's got to be a meeting that is in person with other people in the town. And because at that point, if you're voting that night on a certificate of appropriateness, which is what is required, then you guys need to make sure that you're comfortable with the direction we're doing. For tonight, the important For tonight, the important thing for us is to make sure that we're moving in a direction. We've had meetings with you, the Historic Preservation Board. We've had meetings with all of the residents. And we've had meetings with all of the town council. And so before we spend a lot of money diving into construction documents, I think it's important for us as a town and as the Historic Preservation Board, that as Brad said, has the final say for the certificate of appropriateness, that you guys are comfortable with that. And so, you know, it's a, it's a stepped process. What we don't want to do is spend a lot of money in design and moving forward with direction, which is why we're here at this point at concept level to make sure that H P B is comfortable with it based on our understanding of what we have to do with ensuring that we don't lose our historic designation. And I know when we first met with the H P B, everybody loved what we were proposing. They just wanted to make sure that it was, one, appropriate, and two, which, you know, the appropriateness comes from Tom, our architect, who is a historic architect. And then the rest of it comes from you guys to say, all right, we have Tom, he's supporting what we're doing. We're, we now figured out the program. We just want to make sure that we don't go, you know, off a cliff in the design and spend a lot of money. So I think, to your point, I get it, and I think it is important that we do.
Please, I love you, John, but here's the thing. So what I did notice is my committee, I'm supposed to be the secretary, and I was supposed to take notes, yet the town told me you don't have to take minutes. So the town took their own minutes for the meeting. The, the virtual meetings are called not to have minutes, so I'm just, I'm just like, okay. And then I love her, Tanya's amazing, and, but, so Tanya said, I took some notes, don't worry about it.
So the, the point I was making is that I, I know.
Well, a virtual public meeting on, you know, on a screen, then apparently then you just don't need minutes taken.
No, that we, we, I think that.
They're all recorded.
Let me, let me, let me be clear on a couple of things. First of all, those meetings would be recorded, and I think that's why sometimes you don't have to necessarily take and get a transcription from everything that was spoken on the meeting. But Donna, I hear what you're saying. So if you are, and, and that's why we're here. If, if the public wants an in-person meeting about this, that's something we can do. We can put these up, we can blow them up. There's no problem with that. It just takes, it just takes that input in that ask. The trick to all of this is that to John's point, we want to make sure that we don't get the cart in front of the horse, because if you go too fast, then, then there's a feeling that people don't get to provide input. If you go too slow, then you don't have renderings and, and folks from the public feel like I can't see it, so I don't know whether I like it or not. So, you know, we've, we've kind of done these things a multitude of ways. None of those ways are perfect. That's why we look to, to have these discussions. So if we want to do an in-person meeting, which I, I hear you asking, that's fine. We can totally do that. There's no vote tonight. What we're looking for from council tonight is permission and, and direction to continue on the chartered course. That's all we're looking. We want to make sure we're not totally going down the wrong pathway. So that's what we're looking for from council tonight. We'll take that input and we'll do some in-person public meetings. I have no problem with that. I, it, it's been my experience, though, with, with in-person public meetings is that less people show up than they do on these Zooms. We get a lot more input. Now, can you see everything the same way? Maybe not. So, you know, again, and hey, I still get my paper delivered, so I'm old fashioned. So we can, we can do it either way.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I know, right?
That, Donna, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilperson David.
Yeah, just real quick, I, I want to caution, you know, there's a difference between going back through the town's history and absorbing the name of an English town that we, we took the, took the name only. This is not Windermere, England. This is Windermere, Florida. We have our own identity. We have our own architecture. I, I don't want to, you know, take town hall and, and create some English countryside manner out of it. That's not what we are. We are an Old Town Florida town. That's what we need to portray. So don't get confused by, you know, our sister city and trying to emulate that. You know, and I agree with you, Mayor. You know, we will go forth and show this to all, all aspects of the town residents and get input from them. Whether it be on paper, on virtual, on eight millimeter tape, we'll go forth and do that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Let's see, I thought I saw. Molly, did you, did you take your hand down?
Yeah, you know, I was wondering, this is really stupid. You know, I think we're looking at a million bucks for inside, outside this, this project, and I'm usually low, but if we don't get Healthy West Orange, I was going to say, where does the money come from? But then again, it doesn't really matter. This building's falling down, so.
We have to, right.
We gotta do it anyways, so.
We'll work, we will work. In that case, councilperson Rose, we will work to, to achieve other funding, of course. But, but even if we are fortunate enough to have the Healthy West Orange funding, we're still going to need to do that. So this is a, you know, this is a project that we need to kind of have shovel ready so we can go for appropriations. We can do different, different ways to, to raise these funds. Otherwise, you know, it, it's, it's going to continue in decline. We can, we can prevent some of that, but you know, I mean, there are significant found, you know, that floor's not straight. So every time we have 500 people in there or 300 people in there, it makes me very nervous. So we definitely need to make sure that we are, we are doing what we need, because part of our responsibility with that historical building is the preservation of it, so. Brandy, did you have public comment?
Yes, sorry. I thought you said Brian, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't see Brian, so we'll go with Brandy. How's that?
Good. So I, I have a couple of things. So one, I, I just want to be clear, and since Brad is on tonight, you know, he can probably clarify to, to be clear. When we're talking about the National Historic Preservation Designation that was done in 1994, the application, and I can share the link for people who want to see it, but I have the original application that was submitted to the state and the federal level for our designation back in 1994. So that, based on what the description of, of the building at that time, is how we got our National Historic Preservation Designation. And it goes into extreme detail like that before it was moved from Firmwood Park, there used to be a porch on it. The porch is no longer on it. We have extra windows. We still maintained our dormers. We've had some windows that weren't there. So it is very, very specific and very detailed. So for as much as I have heard conversation with what Brad and, and John has said, and also with Tanya about the fact that our local Historic Preservation Board has this authority, that is absolutely true. It's true in every city in the United States that you can change a building that's on the register, fully aware of that. And I'm also aware that in this situation, we are not going to have federal or state funding tied to the project. Therefore, they can't tell us what to do with it. That is not the same thing, though, as what I brought up last week at the meeting, is that, that we still could lose the designation if it's deemed that it has changed, whatever their definition of significantly is. So I just want to be clear. I'm not saying that we can't, you know, I want, I want a clear answer, and I feel like it's being all danced around, honestly, that, you know, our local Historic Preservation Board, which we've got one person on here speaking that's on the Historic Preservation Board saying she doesn't feel qualified, basically, you know, to, to make this kind of call about town hall. So, you know, our Historic Preservation Board is volunteers from within the community. I'm going to take a wild guess here and say none of them are actually, you know, have received their bachelor's degree in archaeology, like the people I used to work with in New York City. So when Tanya says that she reached out to National Historic Preservation Board, you know, at the Department of Interior, and then they directed her to speak with SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office, for those who don't know some of the acronyms. And they're saying that, you know, it's fine, what we're doing is okay, and they don't have control over it. That's correct. But what I want to know is, can it potentially lose our designation? Have they seen the drawings? Do we have it in writing from the state and the federal level that they've seen our drawings? And if we change these roofs to metal roofs, if we change them to a hip style roof on the south end of the building, if we add these other buildings, you know, the bridal suite or storage area, whatever you want to call it, that it is not going to make it significant enough that they will lose our designation? And do we have that in writing and, and, you know, where they've said, yes, we've reviewed your drawings? And no, we will not lose our designation if we do these so-called changes that are in the plans that this architect has drawn up for us.
That's a smart question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brandy.
I, I do have something else on another topic, but just, well.
What is the other topic?
So the other thing is just that in general, it's regarding using the Healthy West Orange funding. So do you want me to go ahead and ask that now, too?
Well, that's not what we're discussing tonight, so.
Okay.
You know, let's, let's table that for.
No problem.
Table that for.
This one's a much more important one to me at this point.
I don't want to muddy, I don't want to muddy everything up until it's time to muddy it up. Sound fair?
Yep, absolutely.
C.T. Allen and Rick Mitchell, and then if there's any additional council conversation, we'll, we'll move forward from there. We'll close out public comment.
One, I love all of this. I mean, every time I look at town hall, my heart breaks because it does, it needs caring, it needs love, it needs all the fixing. And I, I love all the designs. I'm not an architect. I'm definitely not the smartest one in the room on all of this, so I'm going to trust the experts. I mean, I do have an affinity for the kitchen, so get a chef in there and make sure you're, you're making it a catering kitchen, because literally for events moving forward, they will be able to guide you on. What? Okay, anyway, so that's my only thing on that one. But for self-serving reasons, we are doing Windermere Wine and Dine for the 10th anniversary in February. I will say, even last year, I was very, very nervous safety-wise, and Tanya, this goes back to you guys. That ramp going up to the porch is in, just, it's, it's ready to fall in. It's in total disarray. And I do understand this is going to be a long-term project with moving through the workshops, moving through getting designs locked and loaded and getting, you know, funding. But I will say, is there a way, and, you know, obviously, there's other funding sources and Wine and Dine being one of them, that can we fix just even the ramp going up before a couple of major events? I'm not just going to say ours is, is, you know, the only one, but before February, I couldn't imagine having the ramp the way it is right now, you know, on the north side. So could we think about that on how to blend in maybe a fix, a Band-Aid before we go with the full rehab, which I know is going to take a while?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, C.T. I know that Travis has made sure the underpinnings of all of that is secure, but I understand that the boards on top look a little rough, so maybe we can look into replacing some of those boards that look a little rough. And I'll see about doing that in-house.
Yeah, it's a railing as well, because that is our handicap access, not that during Wine and Dine we have a, a lot, but it, it is a little sketchy. So I would just say, if we, if we need to put some money towards a, a Band-Aid fix before the major fix, I get it, budgets are tight. I, for one, for the safety of the Wine and Dine event, would absolutely participate in that.
Sure, I will, I will look into that.
Molly's grasping right now, but yeah. But anyway, it's important as far as safety measures right now. There are a, a couple of sketchy areas.
Sure. So you're saying that Molly needs a defibrillator right now? Is that what you're saying, C.T.?
She actually is, because I, I throw away our money right and left, so.
Yeah, I will look into that. We'll see what we can do.
All right. Thanks, Tanya.
Yep.
Thank you, C.T. All right. Mr. Mitchell and then councilperson David.
Okay, I just want to say, I'm so happy Molly Rose is back on the council.
Yeah.
I love her. So I 100% support the renovations of town hall. That's a no-brainer. You got liability exposure there. Get rid of that. I mean, fix it. And so, but Tracy wants to go back to the first issue.
Well, I'm just going to just, I'm, I'm kind of just one of those people that speaks from the heart. I absolutely love this town. I love the history of it, and it's all going away. And I just wish you guys would have a little bit of restraint when you think about changing things. I mean, we're already going to demolish half of Main Street. Now you're, the brides room? I mean, I just, I just wish you would keep, hold on to the history, because that's what makes us so great. And that's all I want to say. I've, I've, you know, done a lot of events out of the town hall. It's not perfect, but it's charming. And, and, you know, maybe if we just keep up and with the main, you know, main like kind of renovations to keep it safe, but I just want to tell you as a town resident, we can't keep giving rid of our history. So I just think that y'all need to think about that, and I appreciate everything you do. I'm just passionate. I love your town. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Councilperson David.
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of questions for Brad again. I know he and John and Tanya have done a lot of research on this. You know, Brandy brought up about what, what pulls us off the National Register of Historic Places. And I think the, the National Park Service has designated a, the, the State Historic Preservation Officer as the adjudicator of all that. So, you know, getting things in writing from a national level, I don't think is going to happen. You, you get it from the SHPO, and, you know, quite honestly, that, I've gone through this before over in the Pacific Air Forces, going through red, uh, construction of the, the housing at Hickam Air Force Base that was damaged during Pearl Harbor. You know, so, you know, I think, I think the, 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 John and Brad and Tanya have gone down the right road to confirm that we have got the appropriate approvals to do what we need to do, and it's up to us to decide whether that's appropriate or not. Brad, I'll, I'll defer to you to comment further.
Yes, sir. And, and just to add, so in terms of, you know, being removed from it, that's why you have the Historic Preservation Board, and that's why you have the Certificate of Appropriateness and your certified local government. That's your local check and balance to say what we're doing at the local level is compliant, maintaining the historic integrity with those changes. So you, you have that process in place. But then specifically to, you know, as Brandy shared that website, if you go to there and you look at the properties that are listed out there that have been removed, there's been 36 removed up till 2015, and if you click on them, what you'll see is they burned down, they were badly damaged, they weren't maintained.
Totally different purpose.
So, so, yeah, very significant alterations of character. There's, you know, it's so the level of this, but, but your check and balance locally is that, is your Historic Preservation Board. As you said, councilmember David, the, the entity that you go to is the State Historic Preservation Officer. They're, they're the, I would say, the gatekeeper of the national, you know, designation. Because that's who you go. I, as I said, I, I just, I went through an environmental assessment program. That's who I coordinated with is the State Historic Preservation Officer, even though it was a federal designation. All the, all that correspondence, is it appropriate or not, is through that State Historic Preservation Officer. So, yeah, I, I don't really have any concern as long as the proper public process here locally happens, which it will, and if they make that determination of certificate of appropriateness, so.
Awesome. Thank, thanks, Brad. And, you know, just for reference, you know, we, we rebuilt a lot of the housing on Hickam Air Force Base and worked very closely with the and worked very closely with the Hawaii State Preservation Officer uh, to do that. So there, there are ways to um, appropriately rebuild and, and, you know, repair historic structures like, like we have here. And, and we need to follow that because I hear a lot of the uh, input tonight is, you know, maintain the historic uh, nature of Town Hall. And I wholeheartedly agree. You know, I love Town Hall. I, I, I think it's uh, uh, one of the stowers of uh, of Windermere and, and I'm looking forward to uh, bringing it back to its former glory and making sure it doesn't fall down in the next hurricane.
I think too, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of opportunity to look. And you know, part of the reason that the, that the porch, it doesn't connect to the building itself is because of that historical designation. So um, you know, there are things that the architect takes into consideration uh, from the preservation, not only of the building itself, but of the historical designation as well. So that is certainly any assurances that we're able to receive from the appropriate agencies, we'll want to make sure that we, we get those to the best of our ability. But um, you know, I, I think we're getting uh, solid input as we move forward here. So.
Agree. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, everybody. All right. I appreciate it. I know these are, these are big conversations, some of which we, we have the opportunity to uh, to influence. Some of them are, are, are uh, are, are laws that we follow from, from other jurisdictions that supersede us. So uh, it's a bit of a balanced council person's true.
Just for clarification, um, by the way, I think we also need to do the repairs. So Brad, is it fair to say that our local Historic Preservation Board needs to liaison with the State Historic Preservation Officer to assure that it remains on the National Register?
No, um, no, sir. Um, that.
Not based on our.
Right, based on.
Based on our code.
Correct, correct. So the coordination that Tanya's already done, contacting them with that, I think is, is the appropriate part of the, um, because ultimately, as the response that Tanya got back, it is a local decision on assuring it's, it's appropriateness for that historic, maintaining that historic preservation. Now, doesn't say people can't appeal it and, and try to do it, but it is a local decision um, for that.
So, uh, just one more question here. So if, for instance, we do not go through, if we don't necessarily get quote unquote approval from the State Historic Preservation Officer, and we decide as a local Historic Preservation Board to make changes that are not in line with the requirements of the State Historic Preservation Officer, and we make the changes without consulting them first, and then we find out later that they weren't in compliance, uh, how do we prevent that? Because I know that nobody on that board is you know, qualified to know that. So would you recommend that we make contact with the State Historic Preservation Officer just to make sure before we make those kind of decisions? Or what would you recommend so that we could avoid this not being on the historic register, National Register?
I, I, you, you, yeah, you're not required at all to do that. Um, the, the, the State Historic Preservation Officer won't second guess a local decision as long as you follow your process and procedure within your code to go through that certificate of, of appropriateness. And, and that's, that's one of the important reasons why your board is a certified local government with the State Historic Preservation Office. That you have the proper procedures in place to address and, and make that decision that it still is an appropriate alteration or change to the building. So um, a- and I believe the email that Tanya received today, I mean, it's clear that they, that they're not going to come in after the fact and say, your board was wrong in their determination. Um, so, but, but, you know, if the town council, and that's what you want them to do, I'm not going to say you can't do it. You absolutely can. Um, but it's definitely not required. It's not a necessary, right? It's not required.
And, and it's one of the, Tom, it's one of the reasons why we hired a historical architect too, to work on the project. And it's why we've, we've talked with Brad and we've got his expertise now too, so that what we bring to Historic Preservation Board has gone through the checks and balances. Um, John and I have sent the presentation that you're looking at, um, that you looked at, at the last public workshop. We've sent that over to the state office, um, the head of their compliance division. So they have that in their hands as well. So, um, we're doing everything we can um, to, to get their um, input.
Okay, thank you very much. That clarifies a lot.
Sure.
Yeah, and I don't think, so my experience too is that they're, these, these organi- the, these agencies are not going to come and say, hey, that's great. That's fine. We'll, we'll, we totally agree and certify it. Um, what they'll do is, is they'll potentially say we don't object. So, you know, that's, that's uh, that is part of the process as well. So.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's important too, you know, and Brad and I looking at, you know, because of Brandy's comment, you know, looking at historic designations go away when the use changes dramatically. Like it's no longer functioning as a Town Hall. It's now functioning as a, you know, I don't know, like a elderly home or the building has completely burned down. And so there's nothing left other than foundations. That's when the historic markers go away?
Hmm.
If that makes sense.
Right. All right. I want to thank everybody for their input. I know these are uh, passionate conversations for sure. Um, I also want to make sure that everybody understands that what we're trying to do is to, to preserve, to preserve, certainly not to to take anything away or to uh, erase history. I think that uh, you know, we'll continue to make tweaks and changes um, as are sensible and appropriate for, for the buildings and, and everything else. And some of those other kind, you know, I also, you know, these conversations about the downtown area, everything. And I know people feel passionate about that as well. But, you know, there the, the rules and the laws are there to guide not only our own development, um, but also there are rules and laws that limit what a local jurisdiction can allow and not allow for private property. So, um, you know, i- if those rules and laws weren't there, we may, we may want to do something different, but because those rules and laws are there, we're actually obligated to follow them. So, and that's an important piece that I I don't think, you know, everyone uh, necessarily appreciates. It's uh, it's tough. It's a tough balance for, for us as, as elected officials to try to toe that line and get the maximum uh, that we can in terms of of, of preservation and the maximum in terms of what we think will, will fit the best um, on private property. It's a, it's a tricky and delicate dance. So those are my only comments. Um, anything else from council or staff for this evening? The staff have the direction they need to proceed?
Oh, sorry, Mayor. I, I was short on the, on the mute button. I, I just want to reiterate again, thanks to the staff for all the work they've done on, on both these issues.
Yeah, I'd say thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Rose Williams. I look forward to meeting you, Stroop. We got a lot of connections. David and uh, David, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do your job. This is ridiculous. But thank you for everything you do. I know, I mean, it takes time away from your family. So God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Rick.
Hey, Will, um, so we're going to discuss um, a public meeting as well, an in-person public meeting uh, to, to go ahead over these as well. And um, we can kind of address some of the additional concerns that came up this evening uh, at that next meeting. If that is uh, if that's acceptable to council. Right. Seeing no objection, we will uh, we will say that it is. Um, and I'll ask staff to put that together. Any additional, any additional staff report, sir?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry, I called you, sir, but you got.
No, it's okay. That's okay.
So uh.
It does say Robert Smith under your name.
It does.
Hey, I'm, I'm afraid to change it in case I don't become the host anymore. No one can get in.
That's right.
Um, Mayor came in as Bill Martini. So you know, I mean.
I know. What are you going to do? Dorothy, um, anything from your end?
No, sir. I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John, uh, and Brad, we appreciate your input tonight. And we appreciate all the public input as well. Um, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we'll adjourn at seven forty P M. We're adjourned.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.